Good evening. Thank you guys for coming out tonight. My name is George Prokop. I am president of the Centerville Neighborhood Action Group. And tonight, this event is being sponsored by the CNC, the Citywide Neighborhood Council, and the Centerville Group. So, I do appreciate you guys taking the time. It's cold outside. So, I would like to thank all of the councilors for showing up tonight. I know that Jim Leary is not going to be here. He did tell me after the Potuckeville meeting that he would be away on business. So, I'll email him his questions. I would like to acknowledge, I believe that there is a couple of school committee candidates here. I want to say Noel Kriegen is here. Andy Descotto is here. Dan Shanahan is here. I'm not sure if there's anyone else that I may have missed that's from the school... Regina? Oh. Alright, so... I apologize. Okay. So, tonight's forum, what we're going to be doing is each candidate will have 90 seconds to introduce themselves, to let the people know who you are and what you stand for. And the bell person, who is Melissa DeRocius, please pay attention to her candidates because on this introduction, at 30 seconds, she's going to give you the yellow card. Nobody wants the bell. I hope everyone can hear me, by the way. Okay, perfect. After the introduction, we will go into the questions. They are random questions for random candidates. So, we have two buckets. Question comes in, candidate comes out. Oh, the other way around, sorry. And at the end of the question and answers, we will have a shotgun question that we would like everyone to answer. Okay? In the end, we will have one minute to, again, you know, let the people know what you're for. And again, the card will come out. Oh, by the way, during the questions, you have three minutes. At one minute, the card will be coming out. 30 seconds, the card will be coming out. And then the bell. You can tell she's a school teacher. Okay, so how do we want to start? Start with one side? Okay, so I guess we'll start with Mayor Ed Kennedy. I'm going to give you the mic.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ed Kennedy. I'm a candidate for reelection to the city council. I've lived in Lowell my whole life. I have a master's degree in public administration. And I've served for the past two years as mayor of the city. I've been on the city council since January of 2012. And during that time, I think there's been a lot of progress in terms of economic development, but also in terms of public safety and in the enhancement of several neighborhoods, including the Centerville Neighborhood. So, that's all that I really have to say, other than I hope you'll give me one of your nine votes on November 7th. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank the Centerville Neighborhood Group for putting this on. My name is Dave Conway, and I'm a candidate for Lowell City Council. Excuse me. I'm married to Mary Cassidy, and I have two daughters, Jennifer and Elizabeth, and two granddaughters, which we're so very blessed to have. And I, myself, have spent 37 years as a teacher and housemaster at Lowell High School. I was born and brought up here in the city, and also a proud graduate of Lowell High School. After I retired, I was on the school committee for eight years. And I came back out of that retirement, and I am now the principal of the Hellenic American Academy. So, when I took a look at what was going on here in the city, especially, to be quite frank with you, with Lowell High School, I decided that it was time to run. So, some of the reasons why I'm running, to keep Lowell High School downtown, also to protect public safety, to bring back the Crime Stoppers hotline and the Safety Task Force, which I was on a number of years ago, and also the limit to pay raises. You know, back a few months ago, the city council gave the next council a 67% increase, which I found that appalling. If I'm elected, I will not take that 67% increase. I humbly ask for one of your nine votes. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Melanazzo, and I'm a candidate for reelection to the Lowell City Council. I've served in the council now for six terms, and I was honored to be mayor 2010, 2011. And I'm running again because I really still want a seat at the table with your help. And I do respectfully request one of your nine votes on November 7th. And to deal with things like public safety, public education, economic development, I've had an interesting career in that I did, I've done 20 years in the public sector and about 20 years in the private sector. I too have a master's degree in public administration, so my avocation, if you will, has always been in the public sector. And I feel that I can contribute as a city councilor going forward with the, obviously, very big decisions before us, the location of the high school, the finishing of the Hamilton Canal Innovation District, looking at neighborhoods like the Centerville Neighborhood, looking at the good work that is happening now along Bridge Street, working in partnership with the Centerville Neighborhood Organization, and obviously working with the Citywide Council as it relates to neighborhood issues. And I think this administration, this city council, has listened to your concerns from the standpoint of, again, making sure the quality of life in your neighborhoods, that you feel safe, that our police force, which is at all-time high of 250 sworn offices now, thanks to the current city council and the administration. And I just think we have so much to do from the standpoint of being the premier gateway city in the Commonwealth. We need to make sure that we have the right city council moving forward. So, thank you all for being here.
Hi, my name is Karen Sorillo, and I'm running for city council. I've been a resident for Lowell for seven years. And I live right on Christian Hill on Sixth Street, and I love it. What brought me to Lowell was the diversity of the city. And I fell in love with the city and the goodness and the diversity here in Lowell. And what I want to bring to Lowell City Council is I want it to, I want to bring the city together for the betterment of all. And I feel I can do that because what I do is I work in construction, and we work as a team. And we work really hard as a team. And I feel that I can bring that team effort to Lowell. And so, I would kindly request one of your votes come November 7th. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Corey Malangian. I'm running for city council to serve a third term on the Lowell City Council. And I thank you all for being here. I'm asking you to vote for me tonight because my message has been very consistent throughout these debates. Lowell is a safer or vibrant city than it was just a few years ago. Regarding public safety, since I've been elected in 2013, there has been yearly continuous decreases in violent and gun-related crimes here in the city of Lowell. Regarding the opiate crisis, we've all been hit-hard people. Everybody knows somebody who's hit hard with this crisis. What we're achieving here in the city of Lowell is nothing shy of remarkable. I'm chairman of the Citywide Opiate Task Force here in the city. And while in 2017, the state average of opioid-related deaths is 5%, well, here in the city of Lowell, it's over 40%. I challenge that statistic in any city in the nation. Regarding economic development, now you're all aware, just last week, we signed on another company to relocate to the Hamilton Canal District, totaling five parcels that will be developed, shovels in the ground as early as 2018. We've achieved more at the Hamilton Canal District in 2017 than we have in the last 10 years. So, I'm asking you to vote for me. I am thoroughly committed to this job and serving you. Thank you very much.
Good evening. First off, thanks to the CNC and the CNAG for allowing us the democratic process, to hear every one of us. That is the true democracy at its best. I am Rita Mercia. I have been honored to serve you for 22 years. I have been nothing more than a messenger. I offer myself as that messenger, the link between you and the public and the government. I will continue to work hard for you if you will have me. Through my votes for the past two years, and I heard you two years ago when you said we need public safety, well, we have funded 250 police officers, the highest level in decades, 213 firefighters, which means less company closing and less overtime while maintaining public safety. I am honored to be a part of this team. I love the direction this city is going in. We have a wonderful city manager in Kevin Murphy. On Tuesday, November 7th, I am respectfully asking you to allow me to please stay by casting one of your nine votes for me, number six on the ballot. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. You could be at home watching TV, but you're here doing the right thing. Thank you so much.
My name is Akali Chow. I'm going to stand up to introduce myself because it is an honor to be running for city council. It is an honor to be able to have the opportunity to represent all of you, and it is an honor to have you here tonight. Like many of your great-grandparents, grandparents, or even parents, I traveled the world to be here in Lowell. I came to the United States in 1981. Then I came to Lowell in 1986, where I grew up in the Ager. I walked to the Bonnet School, and I was very fortunate to have given the right guidance. I was able to go to Phillips Academy. I went to McAllister College in St. Paul, Minnesota. After college, I came back to Lowell because this is where all my family were and to take care of my aging mother. I started a business with my wife in downtown Lowell. And that was when I got to know the different neighborhoods. And when I got to learn about Centralville, I heard the name Christian Hill. I used to go to church all the time, so I thought this was God's country. So, I am very honored to be here tonight. I will bring diversity, fresh new ideas, perspective, and an absolute energy to represent every single neighborhood in the city. Please vote for me November 7th.
Good evening. My name is Bill Samaras. I'm running for reelection to the Lowell City Council, and I'm looking for one of your votes. But first, I want to thank the neighborhood councils for establishing these debates. It's your hard work that makes this whole process work well. A little bit about me, I was born and raised in Centerville. When I got married, I moved to Belvedere. My parents had a small store here on Bridge Street called Henry's. It was a small five-and-ten cent store. It was a good store, but it got me, I was able to understand the needs of the neighborhood and also the needs of the small business person. And that's why the neighborhood groups are so important in helping Lowell come together. A little more about me, I was, I am the former headmaster of Lowell High School, and I'm proud of some of the accomplishments. Newsweek magazine listed as one of the best urban high schools in the country. Boston Magazine, one of the best managed. We had a $4 million scholarship, endowed scholarship fund. We established the Latin Lyceum. How did I do that? I worked with the teachers, the parents, the students, and community leaders. That's a skill which I believe I have brought back to the Lowell City Council. It's by working together, we can accomplish all of those facts. When you heard about more policemen on the street, more firemen in the firehouses, no longer shutting firehouses down because of the lack of staff, more money towards education, this is what this council has believed in, this administration. This is what I want to continue to do. With your help, we can make Lowell a better place. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Robert Gignac. I'm a candidate for Lowell City Council. I'm honored to have served on the Lowell School Committee for my second term. I'm a resident, a homeowner in Centerville. And while serving on the school committee, I've served as the Finance Committee Chair, which oversees a budget of $170 million, and the chairman of Lowell High School Subcommittee. If elected to the Lowell City Council, I'll continue to be an advocate for our public school system, to ensure that we adequately fund our schools, to also put together a comprehensive maintenance plan, to ensure we don't put ourselves in a position we're in now with Lowell High School. If elected, I'll also push to improve public safety. Although crime has gone down in the city, living in Centerville, we still have a major issue with absentee landlords. And economic development, we have major projects going on in the city that's going to cost a lot of money to our taxpayers. And the only way we can provide some relief is by bringing in new businesses. So, again, my name is Robert Gignac. I respectfully request your vote on November 7th. Thank you very much for being here.
Hi, my name is Matthew LaLasher. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, and I want to thank the Centerville Neighborhood Action Group for putting this together. The last name may be a name you all know. My grandfather was Ed LaLasher, the state representative and representing part of this district for a number of years. But actually, tonight here in Centerville, it's my other grandfather I'd like to bring up. My grandfather, on my mother's side of the family, was a bartender right here in Don Polsky. Grew up right down the street on Colbert Street. And so, I may know a little bit about this area. But the reason I'm running is more to do with that grandfather and that feeling in the community as a small business owner, as someone who was a janitor, as someone who was working three jobs to support a family. That's Lowell. And that's where I am in my life. I have three small children. I work multiple jobs. I'm a small business owner myself, while also running a trade association for all the gas stations, repair shops, and convenience stores all throughout New England. So, I have a little bit of an understanding of how government affairs work by trying to support them in Boston, and how to bring businesses together to get the job done for economic development. And I think that's a key for where we're going in the future. If we want to continue to have the public safety, and we want to have the educational advances and the other things that this community demands, we're going to need to drive new business. And I'm hopeful you will give me the opportunity to continue many of the programs that have been started and some of the new ideas. I hope you'll listen and hear from me over the course of the next three weeks as we leave forward. I'm asking for your vote, number 17 on the ballot, on November 7th. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Visna Anouk. I'm a candidate for Lowell City Council. I want to thank the Centerville Neighborhood Association for hosting this event tonight. I strongly believe that we must give voice to the diverse perspective that make Lowell such a great city. And we have that opportunity really here in Lowell to make Lowell the great gateway city in the Commonwealth. But what we need to do is that, as a community, we can succeed when we have our government, our police force, our school administration, our firefighters, board and commission reflecting the community that they serve and strive in. And that's important. And we need that to make it happen. So, with this, we can make Lowell happen. And that's why I'm running for Lowell City Council. And I respectfully ask for one of you, and I vote come November 7th. Thank you again.
Good evening. My name is Marty Hogan, and it's a pleasure and an honor to be here in front of you tonight. I also want to thank the association for having us, but I want to thank you even more because you come out and actually give your time and are active citizens. And that's what's important in Lowell and in any community that wants to work to make a better city. A little bit about myself, I am an IT professional, information technology, for people that don't know that. I work with computers all day, but I manage a department for a nonprofit in Boston called Working Inc. We work with physically and mentally disabled adults. And in that job, a lot of my job is just trying to figure out, take the chaos and make it work every day. And that's what I want to come and do for this city. I want to, I want to work with the city. I want to come and help you be a constituent services person. I want to come and listen to you and work for you. My wife and I came here six years ago and bought a house because we couldn't afford anywhere else. And Lowell gave us that opportunity to be homeowners. And I thank Lowell for that. But I also know that we are at a pivotal point right now where the taxes could go through the roof, we could have people pinched, and we could have people moving out. And that's important to me, too. That's, that's really a big piece of why I'm running. Public safety, constituent services, as I said, community development. I want to help the people of Lowell, and I ask you humbly for one of your nine votes on November 7th. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm John Leahy. I'm currently a city councilor now, and I want to thank the Centerville Neighborhood Group for having us here tonight. I have my own business in the city. My wife has her own business. We've had three, we have three children. We put them all through the Lowell Public Schools. I have one more left at high school. He's a senior. I have one in college. So, believe me, we know how to stretch a buck. When you work for yourselves, you've got to be creative, you're going to make that money stretch. And as Marty said, we've got a big decision coming up with the high school. And that's going to cost us some money wherever the high school goes, but it's, it needs to be done. We cannot drop the ball on this high school. It needs to happen. And that's part of the reason why I'm running. I enjoy working with my colleagues on all the issues that we've talked about, public safety, economic development, and education, where we put more money. We've met our net school spending for the last few years, where we haven't in a long time. So, I ask for one of your votes. I want to continue my work. I love doing what I'm doing. And I get to do a lot of my work local, so I'm in the neighborhoods. I get to see what's happening, and I think that I'm a good listener. So, if you have suggestions, if you have complaints, if you have anything that we need to hear, I can, I'd like to listen, and I bring it forward, and with my, the people I serve with, we try to get it done for you. So, again, my name's John Leahy, and I ask for one of your votes. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out. I'm Joe Boyle, and I'm running for Lowell City Council because I want to continue and promote and further the vision and the principles that have made Lowell a model for the successful redevelopment of old industrial cities in the post-industrial era. I'm an urban planner, a Highlands dad, and an educator. I have my master's degree in regional planning from the University of Massachusetts. I spent four and a half years as the city's neighborhood planner, as well, and just finished up a five-year term on the planning board. This experience has given me a perspective. It's given me, it's allowed me to see Lowell's revitalization up close and to understand the vision and the principles that have made us a national and international model of how to lift up a city that was so devastated by deindustrialization. It's the vision of Paul Sangus, of Pat Morgan, of Peter Stamis, also the vision of Ed Davis. It's a vision based on principles like being a walking city, of celebrating our history and our assets as our future. And I'm afraid that, I'm afraid that the city isn't staying true to that vision, and it's turning its back on it. But this has worked for us. It's important that we continue along this path. And so, that's why I'm running for city council, because I believe I can bring that perspective and the understanding of those values and those principles back to the Lowell City Council and allow our future to be just as good for the city as the past 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Danny Rourke, and I'm running for reelection to the Lowell City Council. I'd like to thank CNC for having us here, and especially to my Aunt Patty, who's here tonight. She's a Third Street resident in Centerville, where she grew up. And Aunt, thanks for being here. Even though the real reason why you're here is you're here to see Rita, not me, but as long as, you know, you're here for me, too, thank you very much. So, all my time as a council, I'm very proud of my accomplishments, both personally and as a group. We have done some really good things for the council over the past two terms. And there's no question that the future of the city is on an uptrend. It's on a positive note. You know, with tonight's topics of the future of Lowell, it's always an important topic during any type of election, federal, state, or city-wide. And I think with my background as growing up in the city, probation officer, Lowell District Courts, or working in the city, choosing to stay here and raise my family, you know, as a councilor or as a probation officer, as a coach of multiple sports teams within the city of Lowell, I think I bring that perspective of doing what I think is right through a common sense, practical approach for the residents of Lowell. So, once again, my name is Dan Rourke, and I ask you for one of your votes on November 7th. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming. My name is Dan Finn, and I'm a first-time candidate for Lowell City Council. I want to thank Don Polsky for allowing us to be here tonight. I'm a 45-year-old lifelong resident of the city. I grew up over here on Christian Hill. I went to St. Michael's School. I went to Lowell High, graduated Lowell High, and I also graduated from Middlesex Community College. I come from an extremely large family. I have 12 brothers and sisters, four of them which are, have chosen an occupation of police officers, one that's a fireman, and myself, I worked for the Middlesex Sheriff's Office for the last 20 years. I have four children. I'm married to my wife Tracy, who's a labor and delivery nurse at Lowell General. And I kindly ask for one of your, one of your nine votes. Thank you.
Good evening. Let me thank the organizers as well as you folks for coming out this evening. My name is Rodney Elliott. I'm running for reelection to the city council. I've been married to my wife Laurie for 23 years. We raised both of our children, Caitlin and Michaela, in Potuckeville, and we are proud grandparents to three granddaughters. I've, there's not one day, there's not one meeting, there's not one neighborhood meeting, city council meeting, that I take your vote for granted for the last 20 years. It is a privilege. I don't forget it, and I will not continue to forget it. I represent you. I represent your voice. I came from, before I was a city councilor, I came from a neighborhood organization. I was on the executive board of the Potuckeville Citizens Council. So, I know and value the importance of your ears and our eyes in the neighborhood when we can't be. I have a bachelor's and master's in public administration as well for the last 20 years. I focus primarily, much of my attention, on municipal finance, looking for areas of the budget to cut waste and still keep taxes low. I think we've made great progress in the last 20 years. I think our finances are solid. We continue to deliver services, focus on public safety, and other services that you want and deserve in the city. As chairman of the finance, we have regular meetings, we review audit findings, and just keep an eye and oversight on your tax solves. I want to continue to use my education and my background to go back and continue to do the work that I have done for the last 20 years. I humbly ask for your vote on November 7th. Thank you so much.
Is anybody having difficulty hearing the councilors?
I would also like to acknowledge that Jackie Dougherty, who is also running for school committee, is here. Okay, on to the questions. You want to pick a question? Okay. "The homeless epidemic," sorry, is growing in Lowell. It appears that they have taken up residence under the bridges and over the Merrimack River. Not only are they approaching businesses asking for money, they are also going into residential neighborhoods. As a city councilor, what would be your plan of action for a solution to this problem?"
Daniel Finn.
Well, it's good to get over with. Okay, so homeless in the city, there is a big problem with homeless in the city. Unfortunately, they're put into situations that sometimes they can't get themselves out of. I think we need to educate the residents of the city, the business of the city, and let them know that there's, there's things that they can't control. Mental illness... Mental illness, the epidemic. You know, as far as what can we do about it? I don't know, the services are all downtown. These individuals need to go someplace and sleep at night. The shelter's there. They need to eat. The churches are downtown that feed them. You know, we need to work with them and we need to get them educated. We need to give them job opportunity. And that's what, that's what I think we need to do. Thank you.
What, what changes would you implement to the vacant or foreclosed? I'm sorry, let me start over. What changes would you implement to the vacant or foreclosed ordinance to add more stringent penalties and requirements for lending institutions to maintain properties? Jim Mollinazzo. Want me to read it?
Thank you, thank you for the question. You know, in the city of Lowell, we have been fortunate as of late because a number of the properties that were once vacant and foreclosed by lending institutions, especially the national lending institutions like Bank of America and Wells Fargo, they have been able to be sold. But what does happen sometimes is that these banks, either they use a receivership program or they try to hire a local property manager. But at the end of the day, the properties still are not taken care of. So what we need to do through the Code Enforcement Department, working with Eric Slagel and his group, is to really toughen that ordinance. Right now, I think the fine is a couple of hundred dollars a day. That needs to be increased. Leans need to be put on, on the property so that the day the property is, is transferred to a new owner, that that money will return to the city. And we have to make sure that when the, when the properties are vacant, that the Lowell Police Department, the Lowell Fire Department, they know that the building is vacant. We have to make sure that our young people stay away from the buildings. We don't want them to become activities for drug use and so forth. So I think that we really need to make sure that we work with our police department, or fire department, or work with the local lending institutions. We have a very good collaboration of lenders here in Lowell. There's a group called the Lowell Development and Financial Corporation. And I know that they've actually worked with property owners that were subject to foreclosure and they're able to provide them bridge loans to try to save their property and then do a home improvement loan. So again, I think that by strengthening the ordinance, that will certainly help. And at the same time, making sure that these large national banks, who do use sometimes a receiver to come in and take care of the property, their feet is really helped to the fire and then they make sure that the property is secure and not abandoned and a hindrance to the neighborhood. I look out in the audience and I see Emery Page and she's called us all on various properties that she wants us to pay special attention to. And we do that. And some of the most recent language to the ordinance has actually been changed because of the good work of Emery Page and other neighborhood groups over the, over the years. But again, as we continue to prosper as a community, we're going to see less and less abandoned properties that need to be dealt with. But at the same time, we have to make sure that, again, in my opinion, that the banking community is working with the neighborhood groups to make sure that these properties are not left, left abandoned. So again, I'm the chairman of the zoning subcommittee. We actually have a meeting tomorrow night to go over some proposed changes. And we really are very serious about making sure that the properties in our community are up to standards and not left in disrepair. Thank you.
There was a, there was a non-binding reference, referendum on the ballot regarding location of the high school. If the majority vote is the opposite of yours, would you change your vote? Karen Cirilla.
Yes, hi, everyone. This is, this is a tough question for me. As I worked very hard on the ballot referendum question to get it on the ballot because I wanted to hear all of your voices. I, I work, I want to work for all of you. So while I am a proponent for the downtown, if it does come out that it's, it's for, the majority of the people are for the callee option, then knowing that I work for you, the people of Lowell, then I would accept the, the callee option. So thank you.
As part of civic improvements in different neighborhoods, we have the Adopt an Island Project. This is when neighbors are willing to help keep small areas and small gardens neat and attractive. Do you think we would entice more to help? I'm sorry. Would, do you think we could entice more to help out in the city? If the city were to supply rakes, brooms, and some grass seed and maybe a few plants for the season? That's John Leahy.
Sure, I think that anything would help. If people are willing to give their time and make an effort to adopt an island and improve it. If we could supply some plantings, anything to help them, any equipment to do it, sure. I think it'd be a great thing to do, some water. So I think that would be a great idea. And I'm not sure, I, I think right now you can request at least maybe, you know, rakes and brooms and things like that. But the plantings, I'm not sure about, but we'll find out. So, thank you. And I did want to just say thank you to Jim Leary, who got this on air for us. I think he was a big part of that. Thank you.
Would you favor a property tax reduction for all owner-occupied residents over the age of 70, 75, or other ages? Bill Samaras. I wanted someone else to get that question.
Does that mean I qualify? You know, when you're talking about, you know, taxes and situations like that, what you want to do is be able to give everybody an equal cut in the taxes. When you think of senior citizens, naturally, I mean, many of them on fixed incomes, this is something that we should look towards. But I also look at the young couple that has a child and maybe a child in college, maybe a child at the high school and middle school, and they have a mortgage. And the question is, who do you give the tax cut to? I think what we have to do is look very carefully, as we have in Lowell, looking at the tax rate. Making sure that people pay for the services that they're given. Now, in regard to incentives, we do have some incentives regarding the elderly or people, you know, with handicaps and things like that. But in a sense, not enough. I think time has come when as a city, maybe we have to look at an overall plan as to, okay, we have a tax rate that's relatively fair in the city of Lowell. We have a commercial tax rate that's kind of high. And you have to be careful as to what direction we go in. But I think we can always do better. And I think at this particular point, we should look at various incentives or needs. And it should be on a as-need basis. I don't really have a good answer for this. What I do, the answer that I have is, if you do it right, if you manage your projects well, if you do what you're supposed to and you're fair, people are going to understand that and it's going to work out for everybody. It's all about being fair. It's all about having the right ideas and doing the jobs the right way. So at this particular point, I favor some type of initiative, just not sure as to where we should go with that initiative. You know, sometimes in a situation like this, you'd like to come up with the perfect answer. But again, the perfect answer is, I think what we're doing as a city, we do manage our tax rate well. And we've got some big projects to look at, look at in the future. And it's how we handle those projects that will have an effect on everybody. So yes, if we could do some type of tax incentive program, I would favor it. It's just what kind of tax incentive. Remember, yes, there's the elderly and fixed incomes, but there's the young couple that's managing, just trying to hold on to a mortgage and a home. So the whole question is parity for everybody. Thank you.
What percentage amount of revenue does the city make in real estate, residential and commercials? Fines, fees, municipalities, like water and sewer, et cetera? I'll read that again. What percentage amount of revenue does the city makes in real estate, both residential and commercial? What percentage amount they make in fines and fees and municipalities? Joseph Boyle. Well, you're a planner, you should know.
Thank you very much. I do not have the numbers on that in front of me right now. The vast majority of the city budget, or at least the locally-produced city budget, does come from our real estate taxes, from the residential and from the commercial taxes. Lowell is an unusual community in that it has what we call a split tax rate, where instead of one tax rate that applies to both commercial and residential properties, we have a lower rate for residential property owners and a higher rate for commercial property owners. This is something that's common in older industrial cities, which had, have or had a very large industrial base, a very large business base that they could rely on to pay a substantial share of their tax, of their tax requirements and give a little bit of a break to the homeowners. Obviously, what we've seen over, what Lowell has seen over several decades was the erosion of that industrial base and therefore the erosion of its business tax base. And it's an essential, what's essential for our well-being in order to keep the tax rate down for residential property owners and to provide adequate funding for the services that the city needs to maintain its quality of life, to maintain its safety, to maintain the quality of its services, is to keep growing that business sector. I believe that my experience as a, as a planner, my experience in education in urban planning has given me an insight into what has worked in Lowell to help bring back our business sector and what we can do to keep the momentum going in the future. Thank you.
Code enforcement and inspectional services are among the most challenging aspects of municipal governance. The difficulty sentence around finding the proper balance between protecting private property rights from excessive regulation and promoting neighborhood values through strict enforcement of tighter standards. How would you balance these priorities as a councillor? Mayor Kennedy.
Thank you. I think we do a much better job as far as code enforcement than the city was doing two and four years ago. I think it's much improved. But I still think there's a way to go. And I think that what's really important is that the city is equitable and, and even-handed throughout the city. And I, I know that in my neighborhood, there's, there's a property right now that I'm getting a lot of calls from. And there's individual properties that I think throughout the city and every neighborhood that are eyesores or that people have issues with. And I think that all of the members of the city council are quick to call the code department to send them up there to make sure that it's okay. I think in the long run, what's important is that we be fair and equitable along, across the, across the city. And I think that we do a much better job than we did four years ago. And hopefully, two years from now, we'll be able to say we are doing a better job than we're doing right now. Thank you.
Do you favor a city budget cut to accomplish the construction renovation or renovation of the new high school? And if so, what would you recommend be cut? Shukari Chow.
Would you please ask the question one more time?
Do you favor a city budget cut to accomplish the construction or renovation of the new high school? And if so, what would you recommend be cut?
Good question. I think the city has been running on a very tight budget already. And we have pretty much efficient. The construction of a new high school or renovation of it, I know it's going to be a big burden on the taxpayer in the city. And we have to look for maybe more creative ways, instead of cutting the budget of the city, maybe look for different ways to create revenues. Maybe encourage smaller businesses to grow. Try to attract more businesses from Boston and Cambridge by giving them some kind of incentives to come to Lowell. We need to look for other sources of revenues. Because if you stop cutting the budget, it's going to affect so many different programs that are going so well in the city. And all of us know that every neighborhood need so much of the funding, so much of the programs that we have today.
What do you think is the answer to require businesses and residences to keep their, the front of their properties clean and free from litter? Mr. Dan Rourke.
Thank you. We actually have a program that was just started a couple of years ago that's actually been very beneficial to Centerville Neighborhood. It's the Need Program. Neighborhood Enforcement Division, which you have the police department, the fire department, and code enforcement. When they get complaints on a house or the city manager and his team will do random walks through neighborhoods to look at properties that may be blighted or inhabitable, absentee landlords. And what they do is they just, they have a set of codes that need to be followed, whether it's a trash, or you may see in certain neighborhoods, people pave over grass. So these things are all taken into account, once again, by our developmental services, code enforcement, police and fire. They make a necessary judgment to the property. Reason why this is so important is, you know, one property in the neighborhood can bring neighboring homes and property values down. So I think the city, over the past couple of years, has done a tremendous job of bringing in those absentee landlords or even landlords that do live in these properties to bring their, their places where they rent out to or where they live up to code that not only, you know, creates a better living environment for renters, but also keeps the home values, the property values of those homes and apartment buildings, you know, at a high level for people that want to live there. You know, we just had a motion that was filed last week about property here in Centerville, where again, there was some, some codes that were being violated. where again, there was some codes that were being violated, and the city's been out there this week. And that was as a direct result of multiple citizens, multiple residents in that street came to the council, sent emails and spoke up, and now the city's in action for it. So I think that the D program has been one of, I think, this council's last four years, one of our major accomplishments to help blight properties in the city. Thank you.
Recognizing that Lowell is comprised of very specific neighborhoods, how would you personally commit to equal representation for all neighborhoods? Would you vote for a change to implement a counselor for each section of the city and the rest at large? Mr. Rodney Elliott.
Well, the answer is yes, and I did file a motion several months ago, I think it was January of this past year, to have the city look at a ward and at-large representation system, similar to every other community or every other city in the Commonwealth that has this type of government. And the reason why is I believe it's one of diversity, but it's also one of geographic representation. Centerville, South Lowell, the Acres, some sections of the city do not have city counselors, and I personally feel that that is not the best form of government. I will say luckily, we have neighborhood groups that do, as I mentioned earlier, you, it's like a ten city councilor, that you can call each and every one of us and make sure the voice is heard. So I personally think it's a good way to govern many, I think just Havreville is the only community that does not have it, but I think it's from a geographical having, you still have the same premise of some counselors have the, you know, have the general outlook for the city, and then you have your individual ward counselors that can represent your neighborhood. So I do support it. I do believe that it should go to the voters, and that was the motion, and there is a lawsuit pending, so, you know, moving forward, let the voters have their say, and if it passes, fine, and if not, we, you know, we continue with the government. The government that we have, I mean, clearly, the city is moving forward. And we do work together well, we have our differences of opinion, but at the end of the day, you do see, we do see progress, and we see progress in many areas. We all go as much as we can to your neighborhood organizations, because we know it's important for you to see us there, and it's also good for us to hear what the issues are in the neighborhood. So I do think it makes sense, and perhaps we put on the ballot and let the people vote, and then we live by the vote of the people. Thank you.
What was your most rewarding accomplishment this year, at work, at home, or other? Mr. Corey Belanger.
Thank you for the question, George. Well, I'm going to revert back to my opening remarks, where I alluded to as to the opiate crisis in the city of Lowell. When the state released statistics just a little over a month ago, that opioid-related fatalities are down 5% statewide, and we are turning the corner, and that's a very promising statistic. And to see that the city of Lowell fatalities are down over 40% in the same timeframe made me very, very proud. Now, please, I'm not the one out in the street, help outreach, trying to help these people. I'm just trying to be quarterback to the situation. They are the real heroes, the men and women out there in the street. And I, what I'd like to give the most credit to is our team co-op. Now, we all remember a few years ago in Gloucester, the Angel Program, where you turned in your needles or drugs, you would not be arrested. That was revolutionary at the time. Well, as chairman of the Opiate Task Force, we gave the chief of police a task to come up with something similar to the program for the city of Lowell, because we continue to be hit very hard. And did he answer the bell? He originated a four-member street team that consisted of a full-time police officer, a full-time firefighter, which is unprecedented. I have yet to say, I've been all over the country on seminars on this issue. I have not seen that. Along with two outreach workers from the Lowell house, that follow up with non-fatal overdoses in the city, everyone, within a 24-hour period. They are the real heroes, people. I'm just a loudmouth politician. But the work these men and women have done has been spectacular, to go outreach into sober homes, treatment facilities, and homeless encampments, looking for these men and women who have overdosed, because they're going to, there's a very large percentage. When they leave the emergency room, they're going to be back in very little time. So through the hard work of these men and women, I want to applaud their work. This initiative is out saving lives every day. So I'm really proud of them. Again, I just want to keep this issue on the forefront, and if you elect me, I will continue to keep this issue on the forefront. But that's no doubt, undoubtedly probably my proudest achievement here in 2017 while serving on the city council, to know that you're saving lives, and members of our community and the outlining community. So thank you very much, people, and I will continue. I pledge to continue to work very, very hard on this issue, because it's one of the most issues that faces our city. So thank you very much.
Due to the change in the way the city provides curbside pickup of white goods, which now requires a fee, many residents are stockpiling and illegally dumping excess furniture and household goods on public properties. This is an eyesore, as well as a health hazard. How would you propose to address this problem? Matt LaNasha.
Being out in the neighborhoods as we walk and talk to so many people, this is not the first time something like this has come up. You'll see so many of these areas are known to the local residents, are known to the people in the area. So they have to, we have to make sure that they are known to everybody in inspection services, and in many cases, they are. And I know in certain areas, we've already installed cameras, and we've done other work through inspection services and the police force to try to address this issue. But if you're living in one of those areas, you know that it's not enough, and you know that you need to continue to reach out to us on the council, if I'm lucky to serve, or any of the councils who are currently here today, to be able to move forward on that. As far as individual specific policies, I'm not sure there's anything we would be able to do as far as fines or anything along those lines that's going to curb this. So I think what we're looking at is the ability for us to focus and have targeted enforcement in the areas where we're seeing these problems, but then to follow back behind. Because unfortunately, we've seen too many times in the neighborhoods, these areas get cleaned up only for two to three months later for them to come back and be a problem all over again. So like many of the counselors and others tonight have said, the neighborhood groups are the eyes and ears for us in this area. I don't know if there is a specific policy, and I'd be happy to listen to you and to others to try to find something that gets to a final solution. But I think in the end, what we're looking to do is to make sure we're finding out about these things before they become giant piles of problems in all of these different areas. And then that you're making sure that we're understanding and we're finding out when they do have that problem. I know by talking to someone in particular that was over in the Air City area, right behind Plain Street, if you know, there's an area there that, man, it has been a problem for years. It's gone away, it's come back, there have been cameras, there have been other issues. But in the end, what ended up happening is they've said that they have had, the police forces worked closely with them to just have someone coming by that area at a specific time, in the evening, every night, just to take a look. So maybe there are simple solutions in some of these areas that we could step forward and do, when we're all looking for maybe some kind of government action, some kind of enforcement. Here in the city, we have to take pride in our own city, and we have to make sure that we're all working together to solve a problem such as this, because I don't think there is any simple solution that you're going to find for when people aren't taking pride like we all have, like obviously you have, to show up and listen on a night like tonight. So if I'm lucky enough to be elected, my door will be open, you'll always have the ability to speak with me, and I'll work in every way I can to ensure that these blighted areas are not going to continue in the city. Thank you.
Improvements to parks, public squares, streets, gates, and general downtown play a significant role in fostering a positive image of the city for both residents and visitors, and help to attract potential investors. However, the state and federal grant funds that are typically used to pay for those projects are becoming increasingly scarce due to budget cuts. How would you recommend the city government continue to address those issues in the face of a dwindling resource? Mr. David Conway.
Thank you for the question. First of all, when individuals come into a city or companies are looking to start a business or relocate, they want to make sure that it's a pleasant environment for their employees and also for their customers. This is something that's so extremely important, and I think quite often is put by the side. It's one of those things that people can cut monies right away. I'll tell you what I have done all my life, and I'm a firm believer of it, and that's partnerships. Throughout my entire life, I brought people to the table. I think that's probably my strongest attributes, that bring somebody to the table, bring groups to the table, perfect example. We've got a number of students up at the university. Certainly, they can, we can tap into them for perhaps college credit. We have the second largest high school in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We certainly can develop partnerships with them so that some of the students come out and certainly help to beautify the city. If you take a look at the high school, for example, there's, a perfect example is the ROTC program, that over the years, we have, we've worked with city different sections, and they certainly have helped to beautify the area. They even go out, I know in the wintertime, to help the elderly. So again, I think that you have to get creative and innovative. When the resources are not there, that's when you have to bring the people to the table. And again, I, a number of years ago, a college professor said to me once, when I was going for my master's degree, I didn't know a particular answer, and she said to me, David, you don't have to know all the answers, you just have to know where to get them. And I think that's extremely important. I take a look at people out here right now, do I know everything about Centerville? Well, my mother was born here, but I certainly don't know a heck of a lot about Centerville. I've lived here all my life in Lowell. So where am I going to find, where am I going to find the information? I'm going to find the information right here, just like in every single neighborhood. And it's incumbent on the city council to listen to what the neighborhood people want. And I think that's one of the reasons why we have the ballot question, because they were not listened to. And if I'm elected, I will listen. Thank you.
What is your opinion on the minimum maintenance ordinance for both residential and commercial property owners? How do you think we can enforce it better? Rita Mercier.
How did I know?
I was trying to get to an easy one.
I know, it wasn't easy. But anyway, minimum maintenance is standard. Let me just say that while campaigning on Alma Street, the people were concerned about the outgrowth of the shrubbery, and it was a public safety issue, because if you go out to Riverside, you can't really see what's coming until you're right out there. Lo and behold, we did a lot of calling and complaining, but not so bad that they didn't go up there and give the owner a warning, and that was to no avail. We won the first time. It's not three strikes anymore, it's two. The second time we go, we're going to take some money out of your pocket. So they did trim that out very nice. The neighbors are very happy. They don't have to almost get killed before they go out there. That's a very important ordinance, minimum maintenance. I just want to say that if you went to 70, if you went to 40 Clock Road, you will see that this house was in disarray. I brought it forth to the administration, they worked on it. If you go there now, you'll see it's a work of art. The people sold it, it was in foreclosure, they sold it, and it's beautiful. If you go to 877 Andover Street, I'm telling you this because I go by and I see these things, it is now being addressed, people are living there. Working on another one now, 318. All you have to do is call me, we're working on Beach Street in your Centerville section. Minimum maintenance, all kind of hassling going on there. It's very, very important that we address these, to make it a beautiful neighborhood for you, one house at a time. We saw foreclosed property, we had an auction, the city did, $629,000 for these six pieces of property, and it's going to be put on the tax roll, people are going to live, it's going to be beautiful. That's what it's all about, working together, helping each other. Give me a call, we'll work on it. And I am a pain in the butt, and they get things done, because they don't want me to call three times. Thank you very much.
Drug overdoses are an epidemic in our neighborhood. This is leaving great holes in families, our neighborhoods, and our city. Have you been able to determine any process that would actually address this issue? And what are you able to offer to start the cure today? Should all drug arrests, I'm sorry, should all drug arrests, et cetera, be placed on the crime stats that are reported monthly at neighborhood meetings? Robert Gignac.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the question. The simple answer is yes, I think the statistics should be reported to the neighborhoods. Just to speak a little bit on what I've done to fight this epidemic, a few years ago on my first term, I established an opiate epidemic task force, sorry, Substance Abuse Prevention Awareness Task Force, where we were going to incorporate education in our K-12 system. And what we did is we brought in our partners from the Health Department to speak to our elementary school students about making the right decisions. At middle school level, we had our police officers, our school resource officers come in and talk about the dangers of drugs. And at the high school, we incorporated in the health curriculum, as well as bringing guest speakers and have community forums. After leaving the school committee for a term, those programs went away. So when I got reelected, I worked with Council Blanchek, Councilor Mercier, and a few other counselors and colleagues in the school committee to bring back those programs as well as expand it. I think the solution to this issue is education, education, education. And it's a difficult conversation to have to a six-year-old about drugs, but when they go home and they find their parent is overdosed, somebody needs to have that conversation. We've partnered with the Middlesex District Attorney's Office to do exactly that, to have resources for these young kids who are coming home and finding their parents or loved ones overdosed, or even waking up next to one. What do they do? And now we have these connections and these resources to tap into, to provide these wraparound services for our kids. Again, I can't stress how important education is. And if elected to the city council, I will work with my colleagues in the city council to ensure that we provide funding to the schools and to our public safety and public health officials to ex- health officials to expand those programs. So thank you very much for this important question.
Which one would you like to be on, and why? Vasne Nuh.
So after all, I'm not the last person. Thank you for the question. Well, I spent 27 years in public safety. I started off with the District Attorney Office in 1990, when there's no Asian police officers, when there's no trust with the law enforcement, because the Cambodian-American, Cambodian then just migrated to America. Home invasion, gang issues, and all that is on a ride. They don't report it to the law enforcement. The DA office, Tom Riley, then brought me over from the bank, Shawmut Bank, that's where I work. So I came here, it's not because of pay, it was not a good pay at all, $20,000 years then. But I came here because I do care about building trust with the law enforcement from the community. So community understand that law enforcement here is not law enforcement back in Cambodia. One that they can trust, that they can report, they can build rapport with. So, public safety, I'm not only understanding, I work it every day. So I strongly believe the community policing that then Chief Davis put into place, it worked really well, but I feel that we can do better by doing outreach to the neighborhood, pipeline for some of those people to join the police academy, because wouldn't you agree that when you have a police officer who live in the community, they tend to receive more trust and cooperation? And you sometime prevent things from even happen by neighbor whisper to that officer who live next door, says something's gonna go, something's going on over there, you know? So police patrol certainly deter any crime from happening. Again, I too believe that police alone cannot do this job in terms of solving crime in our community, we need all of us to do that. Partnership, partnership with the community, partnership with the business in the community, because when you have a storefront that's busy, foot traffic, it tend not only to creating jobs locally, but also provide a safer street, clean street, more vibrant in our community. So, public safety, that's what I'd like to be on, if I could. And that's up to the mayor, whoever's going to be elected mayor from this panel, to put me there. But there's also education that's important, because I have nine brothers and sisters, all of whom came here to America, no English. All of us went on to college, have a better job, because that is a cornerstone for a better life for all of us that have children. Without it, you're gonna struggle, working from factory to factory to factory, you never can move on further. So thank you for the question, thank you.
I'm just making sure it's my name. I'm just kidding.
Oh, it is, I do know.
I kinda know.
Actually, it's Jim Leary.
Gonna wait a while.
What would you recommend to alleviate the ongoing traffic and parking problem in the city of Lowell?
So, just this weekend, I spent a good portion of it down in the intersection of VFW and, okay, and Bridge Street. And I noticed there the traffic patterns. I noticed that sometimes it works really well, sometimes it really doesn't work well. I also spent some time at multiple other intersections, and I think what needs to happen is that we need to evaluate what we're doing with the traffic patterns. Not that they're not being done right now, but standing there for just a half an hour, an hour, two hours, whatever it was, I think that our traffic changes so much during the day, and so much during the time of the week and the weekends, that we have to update all the time, I think. I would work to consult, obviously, all the civic groups, because you have the neighbors, including myself, who are out there every day, and we watch Bridge Street, and we watch VFW Parkway, and we watch Plain Street, and we watch Chelmsford Street, and we watched Andover and Nesmith Street, and all the other intersections. I think that it's an ongoing thing, and I think we need to be able to evolve to deal with it. And I don't think we're doing that right now, I think our traffic patterns go with a predetermined setting. And I'd like to see more police officers from time to time sit and watch the pattern, and make sure that the, just watching for a half an hour, seeing how many people actually blew through red lights, went through a yellow light, did not even care who were crossing the streets. So I think we need to add to the police force and have that type of officer on the field. In addition, I think that we have to make sure that we make a preference, not a preference, a priority for people who are walking, this is a walking city. We're supposed to be a walking city, and it is a walking city, it's great for walking around. But we have to make sure that everybody is taking care of as far as safety. You can't have a walking city and have people being hit. I can tell you the other night, the race that we had, the race that we had at nighttime, the night race, it was great, it was amazing, I loved the colors and the lights and everything else. But I also noticed that a lot of the racers were running outside of the lines, especially in the Cox Bridge. And I think that's important for us to watch out for that, because if they run in front of cars, no matter how safe you try to be at night, especially at nighttime, you could hit somebody. So I think what we need to do is, on an ongoing basis, work with the neighborhoods and make sure we're taking care of those streets. And of course, that's what I would do as a city councilor, I would make sure that I work with each one of the neighborhood associations and make sure I get that information. Thank you very much.
I don't know if you remember, there was a shotgun question coming. It's not a shocker, it's not a hard question. I'm told to wait.
In several of the, I was deputy school committee council candidate night the other night over in Melville. And one item that didn't take place over the years, I thought we ought to try here, is, is there anybody in the audience that has a question for one of the councilors? We can take maybe two or three questions, but we won't be able to get everybody, so I see at least one hand up. Two, three? Let's do those three.
Ms. Page.
Thank you very much, and this is for every councilor. I'm a senior citizen, my wife and I own our home, and we fully understand we don't get something for nothing. I'm sick and tired of hearing about Colley Stadium. My question to you is very simple, I ask for a very simple answer. If the question, if you are elected or reelected, and the question of Colley Stadium or the high school comes again to the Lowell City Council, which they're predicting it will, will you vote yes or no for Colley Stadium?
Is there a councilor that wishes to try? Guaranteed. Huh?
I make one suggestion, everybody should have a shot at that.
That's what I asked. I don't know if we can do that. One word? Yes. 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 No.
No.
100% no.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
100% yes.
Yes.
No.
I don't fight it to me, no's.
No.
No.
There are only two women candidates and two minority candidates, so I have a question for any of the rest of you. What have you done to find out what are the special issues of concerns to women and minorities in Lowell? What have you done to approach people who are women or minorities, and what have you discovered are of special concern to them? Thank you. Any of the candidates other than the ladies or the minorities?
Thank you, that's a great question. Since I was in education for so many years, I saw and worked down the high school, I saw, obviously, a multitude of different individuals from different ethnic backgrounds, and we worked with them very, very carefully. However, when we take a look at the example of that representation, you know, that's something that we need to take a good look at. This last year, I became the principal of the Hellenic American Academy, which most people probably know, it's a Greek, it's a Greek school. However, what I did do is I started making it an international school. And this year, we teach kamai, and I do believe that's the only school in the area that does that. And I think that's what we need to do, is to let people know that there are other cultures around, and to celebrate each and every one of them. So that's just one little example that I have done. Thank you.
My question was one of the very beginning questions for candidate Cirillo regarding the ballot and the non-binding referendum question. And you said you had worked very hard on it. And what I wanted to know was, the question led to whether or not the outcome of that ballot question would be pro-Colley or pro-Downtown. But it seems like, from the reading of the wording of the question, that it mentions, "Do you wish to spend money on updating downtown or not?", and completely leaves out the second choice of Colley Stadium. So unless people are really in the loop and know what's going on, when that question's on the ballot and they look at it, how are they supposed to know that a yes means downtown and a no means Colley? Because it's very misrepresentative, the way the question's asked.
Well, I don't necessarily feel that the wording is misleading. I think it's pretty straightforward, actually. If you vote for yes, then you're voting for the renovation. If you vote no, then you are voting for Colley. I think that there is an education process also that the people need to have. And I think that the group that put the referendum question on the ballot is working very hard to get that information out to the people. So, that's... And I also, I work in construction, so I know what a renovation entails, because actually, what I do for work, I don't know if any of you know this, but what I do for work is, I work in construction, and I've worked in construction for nearly 20 years. And what my company specializes is in renovating schools that are occupied, and I currently, I just finished a job at Harvard. So, yes, I don't feel that the question is misleading at all, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and again, this was an impromptu, instead of the shotgun question, that was not my shotgun questions, but we thought it might make sense to give, you know, some people the opportunity to ask some questions. So that being said, we'd like to wrap it up by, again, having each candidate just give one minute selling point. And again, at 30 seconds, Melissa will raise the card, and we will start with Mr. Rodney Elliott.
Thank you again, I won't take the minute. It's, people ask why, you know, why? I have to ask myself, why am I running again? And I'm running again because I still have a passion for the job. I still enjoy listening to people, I still enjoy problem solving, I enjoy using my education and my background to add, I feel I can continue to add value to the city as I have for the last 20 years, and I think that's important. I think it's important to have the passion to be able to work 24/7 for you, the people of the city of Lowell. Again, my name is Rodney Elliott, I'm the second person on the ballot, I respectfully ask for your vote on November 7th. I feel, you know, I'm a hard worker, I'm an independent voice, I'm your voice, I'm not afraid to speak my mind, I'm fiscally conservative, and I'll continue to bring that to the city council. So I thank you very much for your time, and I ask for your vote again. Thank you.
Again, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. During my opening statement, I told you about how I came from a family of public servants. What I failed to mention was the reason why we all went into public service. The reason why is, we watched my mother and father, Anna and Mickey Finn, they gave back to the community endless hours of their weeks, years. My father coached baseball for almost 50 years up at Gage Field, he did so much up there that they named a field after him. So I just wanted you to know, that's where I came from. We, as children, watched them, and we learned from them. I would like for you to please to give me the opportunity to continue to let the Finn family represent the city of Lowell, by giving me one of your nine votes. Again, Dan Finn, thank you.
Once again, thank you very much, and as was the case in the first forum, the questions that were asked this evening were very thoughtful and difficult, and I congratulate all the kids up here for having the time and the effort of putting together terrific answers. Congratulations to everybody up here tonight. Once again, Dan Rock, Ruff City Council, again, going for my third term, and, you know, the theme tonight was the future of the city, and you saw from some of the questions that were asked, it's not just a one dominant issue election, even though, you know, for some, that's where it is. We have multiple things in the city that are having a positive impact, and again, to repeat what I said earlier, Lowell is on the right track, we are going upwards. What we have been able to do over the past two terms has put Lowell in a terrific place, and I ask that you give the chance to continue that positive trend of working for the city of Lowell, and I ask you for your vote November 7th. Thank you very much.
All right, I only have a minute. I wanted to talk to you, ladies and gentlemen, about Centerville, about Centerville and its relationship to downtown. Lowell's downtown needs Centerville, it needs plentiful foot traffic from Centerville. Downtown Lowell grew up dependent upon plentiful foot traffic from the surrounding neighborhoods into downtown, and the neighborhoods grew up dependent on having good access into downtown. That access has been degraded by highway-like road projects which have cut off our neighborhoods from the downtown, and nowhere in Lowell has suffered from that more than Centerville. I propose to work to improve... I propose to work to improve those pedestrian connections, restore them to what they used to be. I propose to bring back the winter wind barriers on the bridges over the Merrimack River so that people from Pawtucketville and especially Centerville can comfortably and reliably and safely access the Downtown. Our Downtown revitalization has come a long way, but it will forever be hobbled, like a horse with a weight tied around its leg so it can't run as fast. It will forever be hobbled until the quality of that pedestrian access to the Downtown is brought back to where it needs to be. Thank you very much, Joe Boils. Vote for me for city council.
Thank you. My name's John Leahy, and I appreciate everybody coming out tonight and taking the time to listen to us. Thank you to the Centerville Neighborhood Group for having us. And again, I love doing this job. As Dan Finn had said, you know, my parents and my grandparents instilled the, just every day told us how important it is to help your neighbor. It's not always about you, it's about helping your neighbors. And that's why I do this job. I just love doing it and appreciate the opportunity and the trust that you give us when you vote for us and you elect us to office. So my name's John Leahy. I appreciate the opportunity for being here again tonight. And I ask for one of your votes on November 9th. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. My name is Marty Hogan, and I am from Centerville. I live up in Watchers Street with my wife, Chris. And when it comes down to it, this really is a job interview for all of you. We're here for a job interview. And the job is constituent services. We're here to take care of all of the issues you have day to day. You can't be there, so we are. And I want to be a councillor that will be there for you 24/7, 365. A couple of things. I think that we have a great city. We have a city that is affordable, that is responsible, and that is fully and always evolving. And I think that we need to keep that going. And in order to do that, we need responsible decisions. We need to make sure that we take the tax burden of the people who live here and not force them out. Make sure that they're taken care of. Because I came from Boston. We were priced out. I had to, you know, move out because of the fact that the taxes and the cost of living down there was very expensive. Again, I want to help everybody. And my name's Marty Hogan, and I humbly ask for one of your seven votes on Tuesday, no, nine votes on Tuesday, November 7th. Thank you.
Thanks again for, all of you, for being here tonight. I think all of you agree that diversity is one of Lowell's greatest strengths. We can't do a better job in listening to them, to those diversity, to everyone in, while we're addressing issues such as public safety, education, economic development. By the way, economic development, we think of big businesses coming to Lowell. Sometimes we tend to forget the little, small businesses on Bridge Street and Memet Road, you know, in the Westwood and Middlesex area. Those are the businesses that support the cities as well. Those are businesses that hire people locally. Those are businesses that run by the family. And so we need to also take care of them, nurture them. And as they expand, help them expand. While looking at big businesses to redevelop our Hampton Canal, need to do a better job at that. So I think that if we engage everyone in doing, in addressing all those issues, we can do a better job for our city. Thank you. I hope I can count on one of your nine votes come November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you. First, I want to make sure if you do like John, vote on the 7th, not the 9th, that'll be too late. My name is Matt LaLasher. The reason I'm running is because I believe Lowell is close. I believe we're really close to something amazing. It happens every 20 years or so, we get an opportunity like this where everything comes together. Where we have the right mix of civic leaders, the right financial structure, to do big things, things that change the future of this city. I'm running because I saw, or I see that 45 years ago, we got a national park. And what did that do for the future of the city? That 20, 25 years ago, we got an arena, we got a ballpark. We're there again. We're in this window. We've done the right things in the last few years to get ourselves in this place. And I believe I can be a new voice, a fresh voice, from a name you may know, but with a history that's even more familiar. I grew up with a single mother. Had my first job when I was nine, delivering newspapers. My second job when I was 11 at a transmission shop. I know what it means to stretch a buck. And I know what it means to try to do constituent services for you. I hope you'll give me an opportunity on November 7th and elect me to be on the council. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you for being here tonight and sharing your Monday night with us. I also want to thank you for allowing me to represent you on the Lowell School Committee. During that time, I think we've made great progress. Two-thirds of our school, for the first time, are high achieving in Level 1 and Level 2. And we've been able to make tremendous changes to move in the right direction. I've been responsible for overseeing with my colleagues a very large budget of $170 million. We've had some dramatic cuts. And as chair of the finance committee, is here to support me and not you. But thank you, thank you very much, and thank you to the organizers.
I also want to thank the neighborhood groups for arranging tonight. I mean, this is what it's all about. But I'm Bill Samaras, I'm looking to be re-elected again to the Lowell City Council. I was fortunate enough or blessed to be in education for many years and your headmaster for 20 years. And during that time, I was able to work with you, the parents, and the children, your children, my students, to make a difference. Part of my bucket list wish was to get on the city council. Why? Because there are things I could do as an administrator. But now, to be on the political side of the fence, there are other things I can do to ensure that we properly fund education, that we create jobs, we make Lowell a safe city, we make it a city where the taxes are equitable, where everybody has an opportunity. That's what it's all about. And I'm looking forward to one of your votes again. Thank you.
My name is Akari Chow. I wish I was born in Lowell. But I really want to establish roots here in the city of Lowell like many of you have. That would be an honor to me. I now live in the Highland with my wife, and we raised two boys, Philip Chow and Matthew. I wish I had Peter, Paul, and Mary also, but my wife said, "Cut it out." I met my wife since I was a senior in high school, and we've been together ever since. I am very loyal to my family. I am very loyal to my friends, my community, and the city. What does loyalty means? It means, it does not mean that you have to agree on everything, but it means that when you have problems, you work together, try to resolve the matter. And that's what I am all about. I'm very loyal and very dedicated to helping every neighborhood in the city. And I had never been in public office, but I can tell you, many of the elderly councillors here, they would vouch for my character. And that says a lot. I promise to work on education, having the best education system for our children that are our future. I will promise to work for neighborhood safety and to make sure our senior citizens stay in their homes longer. This November 7th, please vote for me. Thank you so much, Akari Chow.
Thank you very much and good evening. I'm Rita Mercier. I've been doing this, city counseling, for 22 years. I didn't just get up one morning and say I want to be a city councillor. 30 years ago, I was a neighborhood activist, just like you, in the Lowell Highland Neighborhood Council. Kathy Maynard, Joyce Geroni, and I, we established that group. And I saw the hard work, and I saw people come and wanted to address their problem. Once they got their problem solved, they didn't stay. So I don't know about human nature and how it means to fight and do that. But I have children, and that gave me training to get things done because I was constantly getting training saying, "Shut off the light, pick up your clothes, dah 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 dah." Well, I do that to the city officials that work in the administration. And I do get things done for 22 years. Don't let this one issue stop me. Please. I enjoy being there, I'm honored to serve you. Please allow me one of your nine votes. I'm number six on the ballot. Thank you so much. God bless you. Thanks for being here.
Well, thank you for attending, everybody. To you in the audience, to neighborhood groups, and to the viewers at home, thank you very much. But I'm Cory Belanger, and I'm asking you to vote for me on November 7th. I have been one of your most hottest, most proactive councillors, frequently visiting neighborhoods, events, and businesses throughout the city. While we take this time and debates to laud our individual achievements on the city council, I also realize that I'm part of a team. And this city council has brought this city forward in nearly every facet of government. And if you, the voters, keep this council intact, there is no doubt we can be one of the best mid-sized cities in the country. So I'm asking you to vote for me, Cory Belanger. You'll find me number one on the ballot to keep this momentum going, to keep this city moving forward. I will work tirelessly for you. Thank you very much.
Hi. Thank you so much, everyone, for being here, and thank you to the neighborhood groups. My name is Karen Cirillo. And the reason why I'm running for city council is because I want to give back to the city of Lowell what it's given to me, which is a stronger, better, and healthier life. Eight years ago, I was diagnosed with an aggressive cancer. And I decided to have my treatment here at Lowell General Hospital. And the diversity and the goodness of my team really impressed me. But what impressed me even more was the people of Lowell. The people who at Market Basket, who would say hello to me or smile at me as I was going through one of the hardest times of my life. So what I really want to give back is what you, the city of Lowell, has given to me. So my name is Karen Cirillo, and I would humbly ask for one of your votes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Karen. Good evening again, my name is Jim Melonazzo. I've been on the council now for six terms, and I'm seeking your vote on November 7th. So I respectfully ask for one of your nine votes on November 7th. Back in May of this year, I really didn't think I'd be sitting here tonight at the Dumplesley Club at a candidate's night because I had announced that I was not running for reelection. I have a new job in Revere. I leave the house every day about 6:00. Sometimes I get home at 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night. But this debate over this one issue, the high school, and other things that we have done, as my colleagues have said, we have worked very well together, bringing about economic development, public safety, more money for public education. But I want to continue to use my public-private sector experience to have a seat on the city council because I do think I have something to offer. So again, I respectfully request one of your votes on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening again, and I want to thank each and every one of you for being here tonight, and thank the organizers. This, you know, forums like this, I think are extremely important so that you people see what our ideas are, and we also listen, needless to say, to what you people want and what's important in your lives. Throughout my entire life, I have surrounded myself with people that are smarter than I am in a particular area. And I'm very proud to say that. Being able to get creative, come up with very unique ideas. When I was on the school committee, I brought people to the table and developed a grant writer, which turned out to be about $7 million that was brought into the school department with the help of Kendall Wallace and George Duncan and Brian Madden. This is the type of thing that I want to bring to the city council. And just very quickly, I will not forget who my bosses are. You people. Thank you.
Thank you. The, I would first of all like to thank the Centerville Neighborhood Council for putting on this event. Forums like this are really an important part of the democratic process. And so I would just like to thank all of you for being here and for participating in any way that you did. During my tenure on the city council, I have focused on economic development. I've tried to initiate or support initiatives that would be, that would provide the city with more aggressive approach towards economic development. And I think economic development is important because it's the only way that we can continue to provide quality city services and keep the taxes as low as possible. But during my tenure, I've also focused on and supported every initiative to increase public safety, to preserve the neighborhoods. And during the past two years, I've had the honor of being the mayor of the city of Lowell. So I've been able to focus more on school issues than most of the other members of the city council probably have. And I can just tell you, even though the bell has rang, that during this two years, the schools in Lowell have improved more than in any other two-year period in the past 10 or 20 years. So I would ask you to give one of your nine votes to Ed Kennedy, running for reelection for the city council. Thank you very much, thank you for coming.
Wow. I wish there were 18 seats available because I think you guys did a very splendid job. And I think you guys would work well together. But since there's only nine... No, but seriously, you know, again, I thank you guys. I'm sure it's a thankless job. And you get the butt of all the jokes and all the criticisms. But I think it's an important aspect to this community that we see what you do. And we see that you guys have been working hard in helping Centerville and other parts of the neighborhood. So I greatly appreciate your efforts. I greatly appreciate your time. And we will be voting on November 7th.